Good afternoon, everyone. It's June 25th. I now call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM, and we're going to begin with the pledge.
........................................................................
And you, our agenda's a little different this week. We are going to go into a more informational hearing. As many of you may know, at the 2024 town meeting, the town passed a more ordinance, but we did receive some advice from the state. And we do have our attorney Brad Moore in from Burke, a Burke cleric quasi, and Moore in here to explain some of those recommendations. And is there any questions? So Brad?
Thank you. Do anything to run up Brad Moore in from San... ............ So the ordinance that we passed regulated the placement of moorings on great ponds, which we are allowed to do by state law. But what we've discovered, basically, the problem we have is that we're not allowed to control who places moorings or where unless we institute a permitting system. The ordinance that we had passed with my input was establish a bunch of restrictions about where things can be placed and by who. But there's a state law, which I'll go into, which requires a permitting system in order to make that valid, which also has to include not only non-shorefront property owners, but technically it also has to include non-residents of the town of Acton. So we can't pass anything that is designed to, is designed to not allow people from outside of the lake shorefront to actually get a mooring within the town. Okay? The, if we go, if we look over what we've got in the ordinance, the beginning of it just talks about, in general, you know, defining what constitutes a mooring, establishing a shorefront mooring zone. The mooring zone, that's established by the state, and that is within 200 feet of the shorefront or one-third of the distance across the lake. All right? So that's the mooring zone. No one, by law, no one can even place anything further beyond that anywhere. And then in our ordinance, it basically says that within that shorefront mooring zone, no one can place a mooring out there without the explicit consent of the owner of the adjacent shorefront property. So it basically requires their permission. It has to be restricted within that zone and not create a navigational hazard. Obviously, it's fine to have it restricted within that zone, and it's good to have that language about not creating a navigational hazard. We have some other things about not being allowed for commercial purposes, things like that. A lot of these will stand up against any legal challenges, but there is that permitting issue that is causing a problem. So by way of background, before the board had put this out to public hearing last year, I, in my office, had taken a look at it. Actually, we had looked at several examples of other towns. Our ordinance that we ended up drafting was frankly similar to several towns that have already passed them. So that a lot of these provisions that we have in there, some towns still have in the books, some of them are not enforcing because of the similar issues that we've experienced. It ended up getting passed by the town meeting roughly around that summertime. The state sent us a letter basically saying that we have a concern with the legality of the ordinance because it delegated, in their words, it was that it delegated the authority to establish moorings to property owners rather than to the harbor master. And I forgot to mention, the only way you can have an ordinance that regulates moorings is by appointing a harbor master, and that comes out of the state law that deals with this as well. In this case, our ordinance ended up having the CEO appointed as a harbor master. So that was one of the state's objections to the mooring ordinance. They said also the concern was that it didn't allow for at least 10% of the available mooring sites to be allocated to non-residents of the town of Acton. And that it could, there, there's a privilege in the law for a shorefront owner to have a mooring, you know, like a preference. And, but there's the privilege, that sort of first refusal or that first opportunity is, is no more than one per owner. So they're saying the way this is written, you know, the, the shorefront people could grab all of the available sites. I feel like one problem behind us is that the law as written, it's a little bit confusing. I had a meeting with the, by video with the attorney, one of the assistant attorney general in charge of this. It's, it's one law that deals with both, both the ocean harbors and inland ponds. It doesn't really fit that well with the ocean, with the inland ponds, but it's all kind of lumped together. So that part makes it confusing. You know, at the time we passed it, I didn't, I believe that there was a section three of the ordinance, I'm not going to go with the actual sections, but what it did is it said that this section applies if you find a navigational hazard. So I didn't believe that the non-resident allocation applied to our situation. But basically, the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife had a different opinion. I, I had a meeting with them. I had a meeting with AG's office and the warden service. We all had a video conference, very productive. We learned quite a bit. It was also that they were sending similar letters to other towns in the state where we're dealing most of the year. And that this is that kind of an ongoing issue. If you've been following some of the news on it, one of the big issues that sort of prompted this was actually not so much boat moorings, but like houseboats and these sort of floating structures, including some of the people renting out an Airbnb. And so those had prompted a lot of local efforts to try to regulate them. The, the state's also been putting out a lot of conflicting information on it themselves. The, actually, Inland Fisheries Wildlife last year had information saying, you know, their frequently asked question was, do you have to be a shorefront property owner to place a mooring on a great pond? No, being a waterfront property is not a requirement for placing mooring unless the town requires it. After my meeting with the, with the AG's office, I pointed that out, and they ended up taking that down and putting up a new one that says, no, being a waterfront property owner is not a requirement for placing a mooring on a great pond. So that actually appears on there today. Yeah.
Can they make regulation on this matter? That is the, which bodies in the state can actually regulate this?
So it's, it's not actually Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, it's Department of Agriculture and Conservation, which is the butler. Right? So they're, they're, when it talks, when the law talks about the department, they're the ones who passes these provisions.
Thank you.
They, at the time of the meeting, we were told that they were also at least working on some of this at the state level. There had been a bill in the legislature to try to draft, calling on the state to draft some long ordinances on both moorings and what they call these non, non-water dependent floating structures. All right? These are these sort of houseboat type, type things. That ended up getting changed, and they dropped the mooring part out of it. And so they created a study group for the non-water dependent floating structures. I'm not going to call them houseboats, so I think, I think, all right? And then this past legislative session, they actually did attempt to create a bill. Again, they talked about regulating moorings, and they dropped that part. The legislative liaison for Inland Fisheries and Wildlife told me that the mooring issue was kind of too big. They had to kind of take, you know, chunks of what they deal with. So they only dealt with houseboats. And that law did get passed and signed by the governor, I think, last week. So that law's in effect, which basically bans, I know this is not part of the ordinance, because they don't want to talk about this houseboat thing.
I'd love to hear what you would.
Yeah, so, right. So it bans these, and it defines these non-water dependent floating structures. There's a few that are grandfathered, but they have to apply for leases. I'm, I'm not aware that we have any of these issues around here. But up north, I was aware that there's places that they're basically anchoring these floating places where people could stay. They, floating homes is defined in the statute. And so basically, these things are banned now, from now on. I actually, I saw one just not long ago. I was up visiting my folks. They have a place up on Meselowski Lake, and I saw it. It was a, basically looked like a shed that someone had anchored outside an island, which I was told from some neighbors was like a bunkhouse. Yeah. So, so they do exist, and that has been passed, that law has been passed. A town does not need an ordinance to deal with that issue. If a town has a harbor master, they can enforce that. Then if a town doesn't have a harbor master, the state can enforce it. It also has a section, it's kind of interesting. I've got a copy of the law. You can take a look at it if I stuff. Homemade watercraft has a section trying to control those. They're talking about floating cathibos, floating pickled tables, homemade houseboats, you know, similar things that don't have hull numbers from a manufacturer. They're made, the law makes it rather hard to create those and put them out on the lake. I mean, it's, because people might try to get around it by throwing a motor on it. And so they basically say, all right, if you want to do that, you have to get inspected. It's got a whole rig of rules to go through. Read the law, you can see what they're, they're trying to kind of create some kind of jojapi type structure out of the lake.
So, yeah. Our current ordinance is not effective right now. It's not legal.
It's on the books.
It's on the books, but it's not enforced.
Yeah. I recommended that we pause enforcement of it last year, and the board, the board recognized that and agreed that we need to pause the enforcement on placing, basically telling people who, you know, where they can place moorings because we didn't have a permit system. So a permit system would be, would certainly involve more work than what we drafted the original ordinance, which I purposely, I've worked with the town officials on it, but kind of wanted to try to create something systemic. I didn't want to create something that caused a lot of big administrative headache. But it appears that, and it's my opinion, I, I probably believe this is, the way the law is written, it's basically that we're going to have to, if we're going to regulate who can place a mooring on the lake, we have to create some sort of permitting system.
Brad, I, you mentioned something about the state making up some ordinances, sample ordinances. Is that what you, you mentioned?
They have. Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, see, I'm kind of conflicted here. You know, this, this more ordinance, great and all that. But we had, we had a situation last year with a bridge that we were putting in, and come to find out that, you know, we owned the property that we were working on, you know, because the state said that they owned the lake.
I'm, I'm familiar with this.
Yes, you are. Okay. And, but I, so here we are. We come up with an ordinance, okay? And then the state said, nope, can't do this, can't do that. They own, they own that everything to the high 100-year watermark, right?
Yeah, the great, the, the...
Those great ponds.
Great ponds are in public trust. It's the public. Yeah.
Okay. And then, so really, at the end of the day, it sounds to me like the state should be coming up with the regulations and the ordinance for the towns to adopt into.
They, there's been talk about doing that. And I did also talk with MMA Legal about this. And they're not creating one right now. You know, I, I personally think it would be a little difficult for them to create a true model ordinance because these pro, I mean, these, every lake's different. I mean, what works in, on Sebago Lake or what's needed on Sebago Lake is going to be a lot different than what's on Moose Pond here or something like that. Yeah.
So it seems to me we have two options. One is we put forth an ordinance to remove the current ordinance, or we modify this. If we modify it, what needs to be modified?
If we modify it, what we would need to do is create a system where people would apply for permits for a mooring. There would, just so you know, there would be preference for people who have shorefront properties to have the first go at having the ordinance, at the, the mooring. That's written into Title 38. Like right now, ours says no more than one mooring per 50 feet of shorefrontage. So obviously, the, the shoreowner is going to get the first preference. But then it's, and I, I do have an example of another one that has, from another town that they were talking about. But if they, you know, typically we would say as far as the shorefront owner can apply for more if they want, but it has to be allocated, it has to be a system for allocating them that includes non-residents. And again, it's not just including...
Was that the 10%?
That's 10% of the non-residents of the, of the town. That's not 10% of the non-residents of the lake.
So is that 20% overall would, would have to go to non-shorefront owners?
Nope. It's just a, there is no, there's no quota, except other than 10%, at least has to be allocated to non-residents of the town. Again, it's not very well written.
We're going to go to 10% of the non-residents to place their moor.
Well, that's the issue, is you'd have to figure out, the harbor master would have to figure out where that would go, where they would be able to put them.
Wouldn't most of our non-residents be lake property owners?
Oh, well, I, I think when they mean residents...
Well, no. I mean, I, he just convinced me. I mean, a non-resident is a non-resident.
Right, a 10%, right. So is that 10% a non-resident that happens to own property? Or are they...
That's a good point. I mean, I'd, I'd have to look at what's defined as a resident.
I mean, they're not residents legally.
Yeah, well, I mean, it would be, it would be, who's defined as a resident of 100...
The state, whether they're a property, they would have gone resident.
We consider the non-residents...
I get it.
...in town. No, even though they own property, but they're non-residents.
We use the state's guideline based on their driver's license and all their voting and...
I also look at a non-resident as someone from Sanford says, I don't want to put a mooring on most.
Well, not too. Yeah, that would clearly be it. Yeah.
Well, I don't think it's...
But I think what you're talking, you're talking about someone that has a camp on Square Pond in Massachusetts.
Lives in Connecticut, isn't it? Resides.
Are they a non-resident?
Yeah, as a non-resident.
Is part of the 10% right?
Well, it is.
But, short answer, I don't know the answer to that question. I have to look at it. All right? I'm just looking at it right now. Yeah?
Let's get back to the permitting part, because we're not going to come into it.
Yeah, I have to contact anybody with a...
Jason, can you come up? Sorry.
Yep. I'm going to have to contact anybody with already a existing mooring float, because it's, if you're mooring in this, it's a...
Jason, so the camera can catch you. Sorry.
So, so the mooring in this is designed to, anything securing watercraft float, float plane, or swim area floats in a great pond. So I have to contact pretty much anybody with a cinder block and a chain. Tell them that they have to, pretty much I don't have to send out a mass letter to everybody on the water and say that even though they're existing, they have to come in and now get permitted. Because it's not just future ones, correct?
Well, for example, it's typically, some of these, another example I brought up tonight, it's done on an annual basis, you know, so it could be done, you know, hey, you can administer your mooring and all that stuff. I mean, there could be other tweaks to the ordinance on the definition of a mooring as well. I don't, I thought there was something separate about the boats, but we can take a look at it.
Well, I just...
I think there was.
Yeah. Well, in here, it says, "The ordinance allows installation of moorings for the purpose of securing watercraft float, float plane, or swim floats in a great pond." So that's, to me, floating dock, huh?
Floating dock, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, floating docks. That's in 4.1 applicability.
Basically, anything that's not attached to the shore.
So anything that has a chain that's dangling and attached to something is, is considered a moor. It's not, not, not an anchor, a moor. And so, I mean, it pretty much is, we would have to send out, because I would assume there's nothing grandfathered, or would there be? And is it existing or, you know?
We do have float defined separately. I get you. Yeah, I understand that. Yeah.
You have to go right back to square one and start all over.
I mean, obviously, there would have to be some changes to some of these things, I would think.
Well, let me give you an example of like one of these towns. This one was Costco.
What?
Costco.
Costco, yeah.
Yeah. So they require... They did limit mooring to...
Watercraft.
Watercraft, which might not be about a new deal.
No, that'd be a completely different ballgame. They thought somebody that they had to permit them to swim that. Floating dock is...
Me. So they, watercraft, you know, I guess floating, there's really so much of an issue. But what they require is they require mooring registrations, all right? What they did was actually created different zones. That first 100 feet was the shorefront owner's zone.
Property owner.
Yeah. And then the next 100 feet after that, they had, they've gotten a bunch of caveats of like, for example, it's not practical to put one, you know, hopefully it's too shallow, no way out. But they had like different zones. And then they also had a zone created for places that would be more common type areas. So if you've got a bunch of areas, a bunch of people sharing right away down in the water, that, that the harbor master could work with the representative of the group, which that was sort of a mooring field. All right? So I know you've had those situations before. You've had some of the common developments that have right away like that. So, so they have those, I would call it three sort of zones. They have that shorefront zone, the other designated zone, and then they have the, the common area zone, which, you know, you had, like, if there's a public area, I don't think we have it.
We, we have one of those. Actually, the only, the only issue I've had with this whole ordinance is we have a, I don't know if I should really, we have a place called Rogers Brook Association, and they have probably a dozen plus moorings scattered all across their property and in front of somebody else's property. But there's all kinds of, you know, somebody wants to say, oh, no, they don't own this one. And then they say they own this . So this is all a little bit conflicting.
And we don't know who owns what.
Right. But there's moorings that are too close to other people's boats and, and, but then I try to go out there and say, hey, can we move these moorings? And I get no help from other, the upsides.
Well, if we did pass that type of ordinance, it would probably enable you to establish a mooring field with provisions to ensure that there be no interference in that area.
How often does the registration need to take, the permitting? Did I...
Well, this example is, this example is annually, really.
It would be nice if, if you didn't have to redo it. You got a permit and it just...
Five years.
You know, it's, as long as...
I don't know if that thing would ever happen.
Because I, I don't think we want to run annual permits on moorings.
If you were going to do it.
As long as you've got a permitted one, I think, yeah.
Yeah, just keep it. Just keep it.
Stays with the property owner.
So it sounds like...
I just want to write down a couple things before we...
It sounds like we've got a few things that need to be investigated and considered. This idea of zones has some merit. Perhaps there are other things in here that would need to change, other than a permitting system, or not?
The permitting system's a big one. I mean, the, I mean, the other stuff in it was really basic. It's like, don't interfere, don't put it in a way that interferes.
We need to have clarity about how many of these need to be set aside. When it's 10%, what does that mean? And who's, who's it applied to? We need clarity around that.
I don't know the answer to that issue of residence. If it's a property, that is...
It applies to people from out of state or out of town that own what property...
Are they property owners or non-residents?
I think if it's a property owner, they're probably for the purpose of the statute, consider the residents. That's just my thought. You know what I'm saying?
I can't imagine the state would, no. I would think it would be a problem with the board. Yeah, residents, I mean, whether it's elections or, I mean, it's, residents definitely is pretty much the same. Be interested to see what they say.
That would take care of that 10%.
Is there anyone here from the lake association?
There is a couple of things that I saw in some of these other ordinances that we could add if we wanted, and, which we did before, but it also said like, what you, like, don't put a car engine in there, you know, you know, it has to, not a big job.
Car and mooring? What did you say?
Don't, don't use a car engine as your anchor or something like that. You know, it has some kind of common sense, kind of more environmentally friendly stuff, but what should be for mooring?
I don't know if they're interested. But if we could ask the lake associations to come together and, and work with someone on the board, and Brad, to try to figure out how to craft this in a way that, that works for folks on the lake, while also meeting the requirements of the state. And whoever could represent the town would, of course, work with Jennifer to make sure whatever we do is reasonable. Is that, is that reasonable?
I think it would make sense.
I, I, go ahead.
My name is Bill Rosenkrantz. I'm one of the directors of Square Pond and Boon Association.
Yes.
Association. We would be happy to work with the town of Acton, whoever wants to join that activity, to craft the correct kind of regulations and ordinance to, to manage the moor situation. Okay. I, I did look at the ordinance in Palermo, man. It is almost identical, as you mentioned, to, to yours. And knowing that there's a permitting process required, that's, doesn't sound like it's hard. I like the three-zone approach, because the zone of the landowner is the first zone. That makes it easy. So yes, Square Pond and Boon Association is all in on helping.
I love this feeling about that.
I, I think it sounds like a good idea, getting input from people who, I think it's going to directly immediately impact, but also having other perspectives.
I, I think if we can, if something goes forward and the lake associations are, are endorsing it, it seems to me that's going to mean a lot to other lakefront property owners and citizens in the town. Because it, it affects primarily, obviously, the lake owners. And it's important property, and, and there's a real interest, there's a financial interest by the town in these lakes, and we want to make sure that that is preserved and enhanced.
Jennifer, did you have something?
So I have a, a letter that's, that was emailed to me. I'm just not sure if Mr. and Mrs. Ward or Mr. and Mrs. Duffy are here before I read it. So I'm not sure if it would have been a 10, but I did get one letter. Want to hear it?
Yes, please.
"So we are shorefront property owners who have been on Great East Lake for over 30 years. Regrettably, we are unable to attend tonight's public hearing regarding the town's mooring ordinance on Wednesday, 25th. We are submitting this written public comment and hope that it can be read at your meeting and included as part of the official meeting minutes. We are encouraged by the passing of the mooring ordinance at last year's town meeting. In our view, the select board, town staff, town council, and ultimately town meeting created a straightforward, enforceable regulations for the town of Acton. Understanding that there is a need to make changes to comply with state law, we urge the town to develop a revised ordinance that to the fullest extent maintains the spirits and clarity of the current version. Without a clear ordinance, there are no local regulations governing moorings in Acton's lakes and ponds. Both property owners and non-residents can place moorings without oversight posing safety risks and environmental concerns. This seems to be, this seems to be a situation for the town, and we encourage you to keep an ordinance in place that maintains the language and coherence of the current ordinance as much as possible. We appreciate the work you, the town administration, and staff, elected volunteers, and officials are doing in this matter. Sincerely, Annie and William Ward, Allison and Neil Duffy, property owners at 116 Jericho Way."
Just got a quick question. So, because I wasn't a part of drafting this ordinance, how did this come about? You know, what have we, why do we, you know, I just got to, so is it the houseboats? Or is it moorings of the boats? Or what, do we know? I mean, I'm just kind of curious, because if it's houseboats, can we just say we don't allow them?
If it's houseboats, we don't do it. Because that means...
It's not allowed from the...
Yeah. It's new law. You don't need to, you don't need to pass an ordinance to deal with a houseboat issue.
I think where this came from was a member of one of the lake associations was approached by an individual from the state, and I think it was DEP. And they said, do you have a mooring ordinance? And in your town? And the individual said, no. And this individual who deals with these matters at the state, he says, you really should have one. And that's what started it.
I have, so I have a little...
No, it was DEP.
It is, what, you know, part of the job. I just was curious, you know, is it, was it the houseboats that we were worried about? Or was it people situating mooring in front of properties or too close to the shores or something like that?
All the above.
So it's all the above.
All the above.
Yeah, so I, whichever way to go with it, it doesn't, I'm fine with it, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, so it came from a representative of the state, not the state, someone who had seen what's going on in other ponds and lakes in the, in the state, and it was, uh, with increased activity.
I'll just add, um, there was, I mean, even if you just do an internet search, you'll see a few different controversial things in various towns about them. I, uh, if we do work on them, if you direct me and others to work on revision, I'd probably involve the Harp, there's a Harbor Masters Association, probably involve them as well in reviewing it, and obviously, I think we, we should have the state review it in advance and make sure we don't have any issue with it. I mean, I, I think I know, I'm confident I know what will pass muster. And I think even just a slight revision to the ordinance we have would probably take care of that, but there also is a few...
It's the permitting process, it does sound like it.
It doesn't sound like it'd be a change.
No.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean...
This could be as simple as getting a permit for the transfer station. Of a process?
It's just like...
It's just like getting, I mean, when you think about a permit system, it doesn't have to be some, you know, large elaborate information collection session.
I'll wait till we get in writing the ordinance, because I saw some, like, one of those, it had like, alright, you do your permit, but you're gonna have a plan showing where your mooring is gonna be with all these other things, so I mean, it might be a little bit more, especially if it's gonna be one of those...
Yeah, there's a fee, there's gonna have to be a plan, because I can't just go out and say, okay, yeah, you have this mooring here, I have, you have to have, yeah, it's not a simple say, hey, I have a sticker for a mooring, you know, I can't do that.
Right.
I think it'll be a little bit more.
Um, okay. Is there any other public comment? If you want to come up to the podium, please, say your name.
My name's Craig Schulp. Uh, just got one question on this zoning stuff, which is fine, but the lakefront owners, whether they're residents or not, pay extra taxes for their lakefront, view tax, and now you're starting to talk about zoning things. What is going to stop people from not on that lake, starting to put a bunch of moorings in down by the boat ramp, let's say, on Wilson? Let's say go in there, what's gonna stop from mooring? Well, no, you're, you're just starting to talk about zoning then. The shorefront person has this much, and then this and this. Next thing you know, you could have people putting mooring in that, we call it boat cove, and as long as they keep it just enough so that people can get in and out, but what about the people that own a house? There's actually a house down there for sale right now. The person with that house or buying that house now all of a sudden is looking at eight or ten boats in front of their house.
That's exactly what this is intended to do.
Yeah, but the zoning thing starts to scare me.
What do you mean zoning?
When you were talking, the shorefront owner owns up to here, then you get, get past that hundred feet, I could have four boats in front of my house.
Well, right now...
That's the, that's the only part I see that's a little sketchy. I know you're working on something here.
Right now, they could have them inside a hundred feet.
Yes, they could, but no, they can't.
Not, not in front of the...
You've got your ordinance right now.
Why not?
Not without the property owner's permission.
Again, if you get a hundred feet, please come to the podium, so we can get comments on the camera, so everyone can hear you.
Joyce Faxon, Square Pond. I actually see the zoning as a different, from a different point of view. We live in a cove. The property owners, if they each had their mooring, there would be no other place for anybody to put a boat, and that's almost any cove on, on square. Once, uh, and there are an awful lot of small in and out coves, uh, so I think the zoning is a good thing, because I don't know if you would say all coves are, you know, off limits, or you have to have, you know, a great, a great pond has to, it is greater than ten acres. A cove has to be greater than so big to, to be able to have any kind of moorings in it, other than, uh, you know, the, maybe owners have traditionally that there. But I see that as a good...
In front of your houses is still in front of his house.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And then in front of your house, you've got the, the old fangled, uh, floating toys, you know, those floating toys, and then they are anchored in there, you know? I can tell where, where the, um, cinder blocks are holding the slides, the, the jumping things and stuff like that. So I think, I would agree with, uh, the zones, I think it would be a very good idea. And bless you who are gonna do the work on it.
When it comes to zones, I mean, that's just one idea, that was just one example, or just something I saw in a way that could allocate some and it could reinforce the preference of the property owner. I mean, the reality is, I think it's gonna be, having a mooring, if you don't have a relationship with the person right next door, it's gonna be kind of difficult to reach the boat, you know? So most of the people would, would be someone who has permission of the, of the owner, otherwise they're gonna have to be traveling a ways to get to the boat.
What about right of ways?
Well, right of ways, that's one of the things we were talking about, if there's a bunch of properties serving a right of way, there's ability to create a mooring field for that type of, that type of use.
And, okay, this is what I was starting talking about down the boat ramp.
Yeah.
Like, there's a right of way...
Um, if you're gonna have questions, please come, please come to the podium. But I guess, yeah.
What you, what I was bringing up about that deal, now you're saying right of ways, you could have eight, ten, or twelve people come down, there's right of way, and they start dispersing moorings out in front of everybody else's property.
But it'd be a limited, there'd be a limited amount that could be issued.
They're gonna have to be permitted first.
Yeah.
If there's not enough room to permit eight or ten moorings, it's not gonna...
I appreciate all the comments, and, and I don't think our purpose tonight was to try to craft it. I, I appreciate your input, I, I, I share many of the concerns. I think if we can get the lake associations to kind of take this issue on, talk with council, find out what the possibilities are, and then come back with a, uh, with a draft that we can review, I think that makes a great deal of sense. What I've heard today is there's an interest in retaining a mooring ordinance in some fashion, so long as it doesn't, you know, become such an administrative burden for the town. That's, that's my take on it, and I don't think it will.
This is just informational, kind of explaining the process of the next steps. And as we continue to move on and figure out how we're gonna deal with this, I think we'll have more opportunities for people to share their perspectives and opinions. But we are gonna move on to our next items on our agenda. Brad, thank you very much for being here and speaking about this.
Thank you, Brad.
And just for my purposes, for my purposes, um, obviously, no decisions are being made at the accident informational meeting.
Yeah.
So at some point, it'll reach out to me and let me know.
Yeah, figure out the next step.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Continuing on with the rest of the agenda, um, moorings and bills, have they been signed?
Yes.
Okay, um, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor? A minute of last week's...
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the June eighteenth meeting. Second.
All in favor? Okay, um, town minister, weekly updates.
All right, just a couple of things. Um, first is to let you know that, um, the main voters with disabilities contacted the clerk's office, um, the town, they did a, they evaluated the voting hall, um, recently, and the town was, um, just given one, one write-up. You'll notice on the doors, there's new signs on them, but essentially the handicap doors up top above it, it says off-automatic or hold open. Often people that use the hall put it on hold op, hold open, so they can bring their stuff in and out, and when they're done, they just turn it on off. If it's not set to automatic, then the handicap buttons don't work. So when the state came in to push the button, the door didn't open because it was set on off. So there's now orange signs by each one saying, please leave it on automatic, it's the only way the doors will happen, will open. They're gonna pop back in to see if we're in compliance, so, um, that's that. Next is to, I'll let you know that the land on Young's Ridge Road is closing tomorrow morning at nine AM, so that will be behind us. Reminder that we have, uh, now three openings on the RET committee, so we're looking for positions there. Our assessors from O'Donnell's are still out doing field work for the next two weeks. Two public hearings from the code enforcement on Thursday, July third, there's a public hearing for the discussion of a daycare Apple Blossom Learning Center to be located at eleven forty-nine H Road. This is from Emily Cody. There's a site walk for the planning board for loop-free land development on Tattle Street, application for subdivision on Thursday, July seventeenth at five o'clock. And then another site walk for the daycare that I mentioned also, six o'clock on June twenty-sixth. Those are posted on the town's website, which contains a lot more information. Um, and last, uh, just a mention of our, um, first annual volunteer barbecue tomorrow. Um, we have tried our hardest to reach out to all of our volunteers on the many committees, um, that we have in departments in town. So we hope that we got everybody, we hope to see you tomorrow, we have a good RSVP so far from four to six. If you didn't get an email and you are a volunteer or on a department, if it's not intended, please come. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Um, next we have liaison updates, uh, we're gonna start with Ed.
I have nothing.
Okay.
Cause we just started this, I haven't contacted anyone, so...
And that letter will go out tomorrow, so some of your departments may not know yet.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let me have Tom. Had a chance to meet with, uh, Mark Roy today, who's our outside accountant, uh, who we've been working with now for over a year. Did you maybe call it on the prior meeting? We spoke about asking Mark to develop a capital, a long-term capital plan for the town. Jennifer and I had a chance to talk with him about that, sort of sketched out what the elements of that would look like. Mark was gonna go back and begin to collect some preliminary data. I then suggested that he come to this meeting and lay out for all of you exactly what he plans to do and what information we would be getting with that. So with your consent, we'll invite him to a future meeting, hopefully soon. Personally, I would love to have this in place, uh, prior to, um, figuring out how we're gonna pay for an ambulance if that gets approved. Cause I think it would be worthwhile to figure out where that money's gonna come from and, whether it's taxes, reserves, whatever. So this plan will help us figure those kinds of things out. So, uh, Mark's gonna be working on that, and hopefully in a week or two?
Sure.
I would think we'd get Mark back in and he can talk about that. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Great. Uh, we also met and discussed some payroll tax issues, uh, some changes there that, um, I thought was very good. His, his assistance and eyes on that made a big difference, so, uh, things are going well. Uh, we're still on track to, uh, he's forecasting a surplus for the year. And, uh, so I'm, I'm quite confident that will be the case.
Thank you. Um, John?
I don't have anything.
Okay, uh, David?
Mr. Dennis has obviously started out here, if you can see him, so, um, great news.
Very good.
Other than that, nothing.
And then myself, I'm running that kind of transition, so I did kind of finish up some duties for my previous liaisons. I did interview with the fire chiefs and candidates for that open position, and I did, um, send a, well, email to the, um, Forest Conservation Committee. As I was liaison for the past two years, I did thank them for the experience that I gained and knowledge from being their liaison. Um, and I did attend a RET committee meeting this past Monday, no decision for me, but they discussed a lot about, um, upcoming programs in the upcoming year, which is really exciting to see, that they're gonna be hitting the ground running. And with that, we have department head or committee chair updates. Do we have any department head or committee chairs present? Seeing none, we are gonna go into new business. We, mooring, is there anything else about the mooring?
Just any direction from the board? Couldn't really make decisions. Do you have any direction on what you'd like me to do next regarding what you heard tonight?
I think maybe talk about it and...
I think if we can find out from Brad what that ten percent...
Yeah.
You wanna get those answers first, when I heard of that?
Yeah, I think, I think that's important, to, to find out what those numbers actually mean.
Does, is the board comfortable with, uh, if we bring the lake associations together? And I would hope there would be minimal number of people, we don't want a large group, maybe the...
One or two.
You know, one representative from each lake association, and I would suggest they meet with Mark, and Mark then go over that, so there would be some cost, no, Brad, there would be some costs associated with that, and I just wanna make sure before we do that, that's something you're comfortable. And I, I prefer to lead the issue with them, uh, with, with Brad's guidance, and then when we get something back, uh, it's gonna have the endorsement, hopefully, of all the lakes, and to me, that would carry a lot of weight.
I think that's a very good idea.
Is that gonna be after we get the answers to those questions?
I would lead that to, personally, and if you want to, we can...
No, I think, I think having them all work together is a good idea, but I, I think it's important for us and for anybody that's gonna be doing that work.
The only, only shot I have is, is I don't believe that the, uh, lake association should be dealing with it directly, okay? Because he, he's an hourly thing through us, that can get very expensive.
I did mention that.
I think it'd be something go through her, to us, then through Brad.
I was trying to take you up, you want it, you, you got it.
Look at that, I mean, there's gotta be a selective liaison, there's gotta be something.
I think one of the...
Probably somebody who lived on the lake.
And I think that's a...
Probably somebody that lives on a lake should probably...
If only we had a select that lived on the lake, then we'd have...
On Square Pond.
Oh, on Square Pond.
I'm happy to do it with them, and I'll keep an eye on the fees to make sure it's okay, if you're comfortable with that.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think it's great.
One other thought, and that was, if, if with this mooring ordinance, the harbor master, do you think it, it would be relevant to have them on this group because they're gonna be the ones who have to enforce that?
Yeah.
I want to make sure they're...
He needs to have something for that, so...
All right, so I'll skip something with...
Thank you.
Tom, home master.
Um, next with new business, we have EcoMain Recycling.
Hi.
Hello, my name is Kaden Och, I'm the general manager for EcoMain. Hi Ed, good to see you again. I, uh, it was reported out to me that, um, the town had decided to, um, move a different direction, um, with their solid waste management, um, which is, which is fine, but one of the things that I had expressed to Jennifer was that we would still be interested in working together with your recycle, with, uh, for your recyclable materials, um, if you chose to, uh, select EcoMain as your vendor. Just by way of, of, of background, who is EcoMain? We're a five oh one C three nonprofit corporation. We have eighty member communities, of which, um, twenty-seven are owner communities, and the remaining communities are on contract with those owner communities. The next slide is, is our mission statement, and that's to provide solid waste management services, including recycling, for our member communities in an economically, environmentally responsible manner, um, and also provide, um, public education for improving compliance and participation in our recycling programs. The next slide says, what do we do? Um, we have a waste-to-energy facility where we burn the waste, um, to get a ninety percent reduction in the volume. We also have a landfill, so we're landfilling the ash, um, as opposed to the raw trash, with that ninety percent reduction. So there, you know, basically our landfill is one tenth the size that it would have been if we were just burying trash, and we've been doing that for the last thirty-seven years. Um, we have a state-of-the-art recycling facility, um, that's being upgraded, um, as we speak. We have a food waste recovery, uh, program that we are in partnership with, uh, Exeter Biofuels up in Exeter, Maine. Um, that is one of the leading, um, uh, food waste recyclers across the country. food waste recyclers across the country. We should be very proud that we have a sustainable food waste processor in our own state that's been operating now for eight years. So that's impressive. And then, as I mentioned, we have an asphalt and a landfill that's located in the city of South Portland and the town of Scarborough. On the next slide, you can see all of our member communities. So you can see we stretch quite a ways to the south over the border into New Hampshire, up over to the west, and then into central and down east Maine. So we have a lot of a good assortment of communities in, in southern and in central Maine. The next page just kind of gives you a glimpse...
Next question?
Sure.
What's the difference between an associate and the owner member?
So, oh, and did you say owner?
Yeah, the first, I assume I know what a contract is, but what's the...
Sure. So, so an owner actually owns the organization. So we're owned by 27 owner communities. The rest are in contract with the owner communities.
Okay, be an employee. Same idea as being an employee-owned businesses.
Employee-owned, but again, it's 501(c)(3). It's owned by the municipalities, the municipality's owners. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Great question. This next sheet kind of shows you where we landed with the York County communities who were part of the solid waste group that I think Ed was involved with. And so, kind of, the ones in yellow have decided to come on as owner communities. The ones in green have decided to come on with us as a 30-year contract community. And then the ones in white have decided to do something else.
Did you say 30-year?
30-year.
Okay, thank you.
So Kenneth Bunkport decided to come on as a 30-year member, as well as Old Orchard Beach. So that's where we kind of landed with, with that group of communities. These new communities on the next slide, you can see that those were the two options, being an owner community or a 30-year contract community. We also take short-term agreements as well. We have communities that have as small a contract as three or four or five years. So that would be, that would be an option too. The next slide, I just kind of put in there a waste characterization study. The reason why I put this in there, and although this is, the data here is a little bit dated, but a new, the state just did a waste characterization study, and the results of that is supposed to be out this summer. But the bottom line is, we're still seeing a lot of recyclable materials in the waste stream. My point there is, we have a long way to go. So there's a lot of opportunity, and I'll get to that in a minute, what that opportunity means to municipalities like the town of Acton. We are building a new recycling facility. So this will be a state-of-the-art, single-sort recycling processing facility. That's where all your recyclables, your plastic, your metal, your glass, your paper, your paperboard, cardboard is all mixed together, and then we do the sorting and separating in our plant. The old, the old plant that we have that's still operating was, was built in 2000, 20 years ago. That was a newspaper-based recycling system. At that time, 20 years ago, 90% of what we collected was newspapers. And newspapers obviously have disappeared over the last 20 years, and so now it's a packaging-based system. So when you look at the pile of recyclables at our facility, you won't see hardly any newspapers, but you will see a lot of boxes and packaging material, including plastic, metal, and glass. So the new facility is being built right across, in an existing building, right alongside the turnpike. You can see the turnpike there, in an existing building. And so we're fortunate to have that opportunity to build it right across the street.
And where is that located?
It's in, it's just across from the old Unum campus, across the turnpike from the Unum campus on Blueberry Road in the city of Portland. So the next piece of information is, I think, really something that I thought was important for the town to understand. And you don't need to know all the, all the intricacies of this new program, but the Maine Legislature passed a law in July of 2021 that basically would shift the financial responsibility of managing recycling programs from municipalities to a shared approach, a shared cost. To municipalities will still have a portion of it, but the majority of the costs would be borne by the producers, the packagers, the brands, the people who are putting these items on, on the store shelves, and our, and our consumers are buying them. The feeling there was that they should have some responsibility for the end use of their packaging materials. So this packaging law basically reimburses municipalities for their recycling programs. The program is, is going to be, will start in January of 2026. Reimbursements, because they have to fund the program first before they can reimburse. So in 20, in the calendar of 2026, they're gonna fund the program through collecting fees from the brands, from, from the packagers. That'll go into a stewardship organization that will house those funds, and then those funds will be dispersed to municipalities that have recycling programs for reimbursements for their costs to recycle in their community. And that includes everything from, I know you, you have a transfer station, but it actually includes in more densely populated areas, even curbside collection is eligible for recycling and recycling only. So is processing and, and any other outreach for recycling, all those costs are eligible for reimbursement. So that's why we're advocating that municipalities start to tabulate your costs and track your costs that you're spending on recycling so that you can be eligible for these types of reimbursements.
So you have to keep track of what it is you're recycling, what kind of product, and is some formula that the state will maintain or someone will maintain?
Basically, the stewardship organization will maintain it, and they will, so when you think of packaging, because this is only packaging, so it would include, you know, boxes, plastic, metal, and glass containers. It wouldn't include newspapers, of course, there's hardly any, would include junk mail, would include writing paper or copy paper because it's not packaged. So that's why it's a proportional reimbursement, only for packaging. But we figure about 50 to 75% of what's collected in recycling programs is packaging. So it's gonna be significant. So if you add up your costs associated with running your recycling program, and you can get 50 to 70%, 75% reimbursement for that, I think it's worth doing and participating in that program. I did include a couple of slides on markets, just to kind of give you a feel for where markets have been over the last year. Cardboard markets are strong. We've actually shifted from an export environment to a domestic market for cardboard and paper materials, which is good. And so much of our material on the fiber side is actually staying domestically. A lot of investment, a lot of investment in, in old paper mills that used to make paper are now making packaging. I, mixed paper has had mixed results. Luckily, there's not as much mixed paper out there anymore. And then I included some background on metal as well as plastics. A lot of people, there's a lot, a lot of rumors out there that plastics don't get recycled. That's true for some plastics, like flexible packaging and bags and film packaging and candy wrappers and salad bags, and those kind of low-end plastics, yeah, there's not much of a market for it all. But when you look at the rigid plastics, like milk jugs, like laundry, plastic laundry detergent containers, those have, soda bottles, water bottles, those have very strong markets. And you can actually see that, that top one there, the orange, the orange bar graph, that's milk jugs, gallon milk jugs, the cloudy gallon, gallon milk jugs have been worth, just in April, were worth over $2,000 a ton. There's no way anybody's gonna throw bales of that material away when it's worth that kind of value. So I can assure you that, that some plastics, not all, have good value, and the markets are, are growing for that.
Did I understand that when you take waste, you'll actually do, you have a service of sorting the material?
We will sort and separate, so it's one bin.
So, so when you do that, are you keeping track of how much hard plastic is coming from Acton?
We're keeping track, what we have from Acton is, we have your truck that comes in, every truck gets weighed.
Yeah.
And then we have what we sell, what we turn, what we sort and separate, and then what we sell to the market. And so your, your characterization isn't gonna be that much different than your neighbor, because most consumers buy similar products. And so it may not be exact, but it'll be similar.
You're doing a percentage.
It's a percentage.
Based on the tonnage, you're saying so much of it is this or that?
Exactly.
We make up 2% of their tonnage.
Okay.
We get 2% back.
Okay, thank you.
So this last, and then, and then, of course, our outreach. We're in the schools, we're fairs, we're festivals. We wanna be everywhere because we're trying to move the needle on recycling. Because landfilling, obviously, there's no, there's no benefit to storing waste in a landfill. It's there forever. And so we, there's limited landfill capacity. About 2.5 million tons of waste from some of our neighbors to the south, specifically Massachusetts and Connecticut, are shipping waste from those states to Ohio to be landfilled. Can you imagine the cost of shipping that waste all the way to Ohio? My, my point there is that landfill capacity in New England is finite. It's very limited, and we need to move in a different direction. I think we've gone, come a long way, but we have a long way to go. And so this last page I, I put together really specifically for Acton because I feel, we feel, that you can do better, like many other communities, with your recycling rate, with more education, in making it as easy as, as possible for your residents to recycle. So that's one thing that we, we advocate for, is the single-sort recycling. Let us do the sorting and separating for you so that nobody has to have multiple bins and, you know, put, you know, have five different bins for five different items. It all comes in, in one mix, as I mentioned before. We do that sorting and separating. And then, again, your recycling costs, if it's convenient, the convenience of having that obviously costs money, but that is eligible for reimbursement to the town.
So when you say a single bin, is that all of the trash that a household may have?
No.
No, just the recycling?
Just the recycling. So you have two bins at home, yeah, one for trash, one for recycling.
Got it.
So when that stuff comes into our, our transfer station, our recycling building, they just throw everything in one thing, other than the cardboard? Cardboard would still be compact and that, and ship it separate, correct?
Well, you can, but you don't have to go through that labor of, of doing anything separate. You can have one bin for all recyclables.
We, we don't have a whole lot of room at the transfer station to bring in more bins, a lot more bins. So I think bailing the cardboard would be the best.
Yeah, I mean, just trying to figure out how this all works, so.
Right. Basically, you're talking like one 30 or 40-yard container.
A 30, a compactor for recycling and a compactor for trash. So you would have two, basically two hoppers, one for trash, one for recycling.
Okay, so you're doing it in a compactor?
In a compactor with a 40-yard box, as you mentioned.
Okay.
That's what, that's the way most of the towns are transitioning to. So they have two bins, self-service, tossing the material into one of those two bins.
How, how does the five-cent deposit fall into any of this?
It's not eligible.
Because right now, we're separating all that and getting that.
Yeah, the five cents?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, that's already a steward, that's at the deposit bottle of legislature, that's already a stewardship program that's already in place. So that would, that would be separate. Now, if the deposit containers end up in the recycling, in the general recycling bin, then that would be included. But it's a separate program. It's already a stewardship organization that is already paying the deposit back.
So, so this other compactor, who supplies that compactor?
You would, you would have, you, you, just like now, you, you bought, you rent or you bought a compactor for trash, you would do the same thing for recycling.
And we would have to do our own trucking.
And you have to do your own trucking, but the hauling from here to Portland is included in the reimbursement. So through the packaging stewardship organization. So that's a reimbursable cost.
So what's the reimbursement of something like that?
Excuse me?
So the reimbursement would be based on what now?
Would that be the 50 to 75%?
So let's say they, they charge you 200 or $100 to get from here to Portland, or 200, or whatever it is.
Five.
50 to 75% of the hauling for the recycling is covered, not for, nothing for trash is covered. The only reimbursements come for your recycling costs, including hauling, transportation, public education, sorting, separating, any of those things. So when it comes to our place, for example, we would charge you a fee to sort and separate your recyclable materials. So you, so basically, your costs would be, you've got to rent the container, you've got to rent the compactor or buy it, and then you have to haul it to Portland, and then you have to pay us to sort and separate. All those costs are eligible for reimbursement for recycling. And then, in addition to that, we would give you, we, the organization would share the revenue in the sale of the material 50/50 with you.
So when you were talking about, based on the tonnage, there was a formula for determining how much of that would be various type of recyclable components?
Yep.
And that we could get reimbursed or, or payments to us for some percentage or some amount of money. Is the hauling included in that payment amount you were talking about? That's separate?
That's separate. So you would have, you would hire a hauler, a seller, a waste management, or whoever.
Okay.
And, and, and that would be a cost that you would, you keep track of, that would be eligible, and then you would have a cost for sorting.
Great.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah. And you're talking 130 a ton?
The processing cost is 130 a ton.
Of what you have in here.
Yep, 130 a ton, and then the, and then the, with a 50% rebate on the material sales.
So it'd be 50% off of the 130?
No, no, no.
No, okay.
It's 130, and then 50% of what, the average commodity revenue from the sale of the recyclable materials.
Any other thoughts?
Very, very informative, thank you.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them later.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, we're gonna go into appointments.
Okay, so we have our cemetery members for this year, Gerald Carter, Suzanne Doyle, Blair Huff, Tracy LaBassier, Wayne Mischun, and Steve Porello. While you're considering those, I just wanna take a moment to thank Amy Marrow for her service on the Town of Acton Cemetery Committee. She did a great job this past year. She decided to seek a reappointment, but she worked really hard for the committee as a non-resident of Acton, and we really appreciate her.
All right, I'll make a single motion incorporating all of them. They all have the same expiration date, June 30, 26. I'll make a motion to appoint to the cemetery committee the following individuals, Gerald Carter, Suzanne Doyle, Blair Huff, Tracy LaBassier, Wayne Mischun, and Steve Porello for a term expiring June 30, 2026.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Got some others, Jennifer?
Yes.
Pass these along.
Mossom Dam Watership Committee that we are part of with Sanford and Chapley, Lee Robitour, Adele Schuchfield, and Daniel Norwood. These are two-year terms per the contract.
Make a motion to appoint to the Mossom Dam Committee, Dan Norwood, Adele Schuchfield?
Schuchfield.
Schuchfield, excuse me, and Lee Robitour, for a term ending June 30, 2027.
Sleutman's always been on there.
Yeah, I did it for a while.
Have you ever voiced a point?
Yeah, they appointed for the...
I just, yeah, I just saw it and I realized we did that.
I think I've made that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Do you have any others, Jennifer?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So I was gonna say, with your approval, I have an item that I wanted to add.
I think that.
Fire Department new hire, let's talk about it when you're ready. So the fire chief and a selectman met with the applicants for the full-time position that we have open at the fire department, and after meeting with the fire chief, it's a recommendation that we make an offer to candidate A per our conversation. They move forward on that hire.
I entertain a motion. Make a motion to appoint, is it firefighter A? Yes, candidate A.
Candidate A.
Candidate A.
The first one.
Firefighter.
As recommended by the statute.
As recommended by the statute.
Second.
Second, all in favor of the fourth candidate A? With that being said, we are coming into public comments. Is anybody, does any public comments? Yep, you can turn the voting, please. Cemetery bachelor Tom.
I need Tom to sign the...
Sign the cemetery.
Mary Ann Robitour, resident of Square Pond. Just one quick question or comment, and then question about the mooring. Lisa, a lot of research. I'm sure he'd be willing to help you.
Yeah, great. Great.
That's what happens when you're late, right?
So nice she's on.
You should have told Mary to sign about before we came in.
But in speaking with the Polarmo, Polarmo, I think it's Polarmo, Maine, Harvard Master, just today, he found out that the critical thing is that you have to have a...
Perma?
No, the Harvard Master has to be certified.
Yes, we knew that.
You did, okay. Has, has...
He has to be certified within so many months of being appointed. But when the policy was essentially...
But when the policy was essentially put on hold.
Okay.
That we held off before we decided whether or not to send it or move forward with permitting, so we didn't put any money into that, but we are aware of the statute.
Okay, I was thinking maybe that's why.
I think the committee will consider that as well. I think the committee is for the group.
Yeah, it's a three-day thing.
Yeah, he has to be certified regardless of the committee.
The main criminal justice system.
Yeah.
Is the one that, it's weird.
Probably have to reappoint him multiple times.
Any other public comments?
Bill Resiniak, good evening.
Hey, sir.
Um, I have a couple of things that I'd like to, uh, put to the board. They're kinda related. For, I wanna talk about Iron Tales a little bit. I missed, I missed a meeting last week when they approved, reaproved his permits. I was told by someone else it was the next, it was on the Thursday, but I missed it, so that's my fault. But I'm here to say that, uh, I have some complaints and safety issues regarding Iron Tales. I do live close by, but, uh, the, the noise and the stuff that happens there is really crazy, and although we don't officially have a lot of police calls, sheriff calls to the establishment, the amount of, uh, motor vehicle and, you know, noise issues and stuff is unending for most of the days that Iron Tales is open. Um, and given that the first month of this year that he's been open, it's been mostly cool and rainy, has dampened it, but I can say for a fact that I have been woken up at least one time per week in my sleep after ten PM by a loud motorcycle or truck. Um, it's not just motorcycles, burning rubber, doing donuts, what, what have you. Um, and it affects my health a little bit, honestly. So if I go, if I miss out some sleep, I go to bed at ten, I get up at five, five fifteen in the morning. So it, it can be a little rough, and some of these times it's at eleven-thirty at night. So, um, I just wanna bring that to the board's attention. Something else that happened, this literally happened a few days ago. My wife was pulling out on the Milton Mills Road, and literally, if she had not seen it, she would've pulled out in front of two bikers that were drag racing. This was on a Wednesday or a Thursday last week. Um, and to top it off, their, their friends were videotaping the drag race down Milton Mills Road. I mean, this is the kind of stuff happens all year long. Usually it's, usually it's limited to the end of the week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Um, but something has to be done about it, and I have personally had conversations this past week and last week with some sheriffs, different, different ones, and, or deputies, I should say. And, um, one of those deputies lives in Shapley on the other side of Mossom Lake, and he can hear the, he can hear the noise, so he knows what I'm talking about. Um, but unfortunately, they're off duty or what have you, and they can't show up. Uh, which, after these comments, I don't know if you have any questions for me or...
My only, my only thing is, or thought process is, you named, took place on Milton Mills Road, which is state road, and we don't really have any jurisdiction over anything like that. And evidence, Iron Tales, if the patron is not on their property, that's not anything that they really control.
But we do have, the town does have jurisdiction with the business itself if it's creating a nuisance or, uh, not following zoning rules regarding its operation, correct?
Yeah, and we can, we can follow up and, and see if they're, if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, but in regards to things that take place on Milton Mills, that's, that's something that, again, it's not on their property, patrons leave their business, that's up to them, that would, I would assume, and I could be wrong, would be more of a shared issue, which it sounds like you've started to.
This is, that's part two of why I'm here before you is, yeah, I had a conversation with Bill, what, last week? What was it, last Thursday? Few days, it was a few days ago, yeah. And he, he just said that, you know, he's called him in the past, he had called that day. And I told him to call him, and, and if that doesn't work out for him, he could come and see us on Wednesday night.
Okay.
So, uh, let's talk about, we have a new contract with a dedicated sheriff for our town. There was a lot of discussion about it leading up to that, and, um, you know, for the most part, it's all good discussion, people give their input, you guys are, you know what's going on, you know the numbers for the town budget. But there's some issues with our sheriff's department, we're all aware that, uh, we're, they're understaffed, and, uh, I don't know, Sheriff King has voted in, but he has to be answered to somebody or be under the guidance of somebody, whether it's the county commissioners or the state domain, I don't know which. But I feel that there's just not enough effort being put into fortifying the sheriff's service for York County. And even if we didn't have a dedicated sheriff, for the number of traffic violations, speeding, reckless, uh, uh, the amount of drugs and things that go on in our area, I mean, we're not a high-crime town, that doesn't mean we don't have crime here. Uh, the petty theft that happens out of people's properties, I mean, this is all stuff, we should have better coverage than this, even if we're not having a dedicated sheriff. So, um, this is my opinion, uh, but I, I, I wanted to address this with you, the board, and, and, uh, see if there's anything we can do to improve our sheriff coverage. And along with this, uh, this is my last part, I wanna propose, if it's possible, after speaking with the sheriffs, can we renegotiate our contract? I was told we could. I would like to see some nighttime hours of service from our dedicated sheriff. And in particular, Thursday, Friday, Saturday are the days, Friday, Saturday being the prime days that I'm concerned, and would prefer to see some nighttime trolling of our roads in relation to Iron Tales and the incidents I'm talking about. So with that, I'd give it back to you.
Is this primarily a nighttime issue?
Mostly. I mean, when I say nighttime, late afternoon till eleven-thirty, midnight, um, we have some individuals in town that, I don't know, Iron Tales empowers them, but they come over to that part of town and they do donuts in the middle of Milton Mills or one oh nine, whatever, and I mean, these are people with loud vehicles, mostly pickup trucks. But, I mean, they're local residents and they have nothing to do directly with Iron Tales. It's not Iron Tales' fault, but given the fact that the motorcycles like to do their burnout when they're coming and going, it seems to attract more, more of that, so.
Every road in town is covered with.
Oh, it is, it is.
I just wanna be clear about.
It's covered with what?
Rubber.
Rubber.
Yeah, I got him on my screen.
Iron Tales doesn't control the actions of individuals, so I don't wanna, I don't know, empowering, I don't know if that's a proper word choice, but I think regardless of their individuals making choices, something like.
You can't hold them accountable for what they do.
So I'm just gonna be careful, careful.
Yeah, but it's mostly a law issue, it's not.
Yeah, no, no, I just, I just wanna be careful.
But, but the problem is, is he's got some point.
No, I agree.
I, I was at my house the other night, I know it's Bike Week, so I give them a pass on Bike Week, cause you know what's happening. But it was almost ten o'clock, and I could hear the rev limo at my house, and it's like, and I cringe because I know Bill's gonna call. Well, now, it's, it's even worse. But, yeah, but you live right there, and I could hear it at my house, so I can understand its frustration.
It's even worse. We take Iron Tales out of it.
Let's, let's.
Let's take them out of it for the moment.
Okay.
I understand it's a draw, but, you know, it's really not Iron Tales' issue. It's a town issue, but we've got a zone in town that, um, is creating some road hazards. Fair?
Literally.
At least that's what's being suggested, and it seems to be occurring at a particular time. Right? Um, I think that's an issue the town should take on. If we're, I don't know how many people in this area would share your point of view, but I've heard enough of it that I suspect there are some. And, uh, I'm not quite sure what to do about it. For me personally, I would try to sit down with the sheriff and have him hear from people about what they're dealing with, and let's see what the sheriff has to say about it. He's data provider.
It's a simple solution. You know, it's, it's the sheriff's job.
That's what.
And if you know this is happening on certain nights of the week, it shouldn't take a genius to figure out that maybe you oughta put a patrol down there, you know, once in a while you do that and they'll stop doing it.
I, I think he, I think he responded when we had him in here. And, um, and it's not just responded to the selectmen, I think there was a lot of people that were here, and they expressed their point of view, and it had an impact, at least I believe it has. And we try to create a venue like that, where we ask the sheriff to come in, Deputy Samborn would be welcome, and others as well, and let him hear from residents about what's going on. I would, but it's, I would make clear it's not an Iron Tales issue.
That, that was mine.
Yeah, and if I could back you guys up a little bit to, uh, my comments regarding that they're understaffed, I mean, you all, we all know that.
Yeah, we do.
But, uh, who is regulating, watching the sheriff's department to say that, hey, you guys need to step it up here a little bit?
I believe that's the county commissioner, although he's elected.
That and the voters, cause he is elected.
Yeah, he's elected.
Yeah, and I just wanna make mention, I'm, your comment about the hours and schedule, um, so we, the town is gonna be hard pressed in the middle of a contract to renegotiate. They signed the contract, there's a clause in the end of it that talks about, talks about that, but this isn't really gonna qualify, but I wanna assure you that the deputy sheriff has a, um, has a schedule that, that changes regularly. We don't advertise it because we don't want anybody to know when he's in town, I'm the only one that probably has it, but it is days and nights, it alternates from during the week to weekends. He has shift, his schedule is all over the place. Uh, you may, you know, see him on days for a couple of days in a row, which is tonight, we just don't advertise it. But even when he's not on duty, someone is always covering Acton. So, you know, you need to really just keep calling nine-one-one every time you have an issue. If they're drag racing, if things run safe, you need to call them and continue to put the pressure on them.
That's, well, honestly, that's pretty crazy, but I can do that.
But that, I mean, that's what you need to do with.
I can do that, but that's really, it's a moot, it's a moot call.
And what's is out of the bond at that.
Being wasting emergency service.
It's not, it's not a waste of your time. Because when you make that call, every time you make that call, you're on record, right?
Okay.
Then when something happens, cause believe me, you know, my father's road commissioner, I was a road commissioner, I'm on there a zillion times because they called me for road, you know, road stuff.
Yeah.
So they know every time I've been called and every time they, I've called them. So, but you will be on record, and then when something does happen, like we do an alcohol thing, it's a zillion, zillion calls from Bill's and you, it won't even say you, though. But, uh, and something does happen bad, then we have grounds to, you know, look at it like a.
Well, and the crux of it for somebody like me or anybody that calls is they'll say, do you want to dispatch a sheriff?
Say yes.
And I can say yes, but I know that five minutes ago, they left the area already. In the time it took me to pay the call.
You know, you never know.
But if you keep, if you do call.
I would, I would make a big, I'd be a pain if you keep calling.
I, I think the only way to solve this problem.
I'm not only for you, but for the other people.
You need a police presence, that people need to know the police may be in the area. If they don't know if they are or not, they need to be there on some basis.
It just takes one or two people to get caught.
I like, I like your point, because if there's a chance, that's enough to quell it somewhat.
That's right.
You know, if, if there is presence, but that's the whole thing, and my hope, right, and why I'm kinda upset about it, is there's virtually no, no presence. And I mean, I have literally seen our dedicated sheriff at, at, mostly at the Shapley School, not the Acton School, uh, during the days, okay? And I mean, school's a great place to put a sheriff, makes the kids and the, and the parents feel good, but given that we're very rural, very small, very, we know all, everybody in town, I think that's not the best way to serve our town, but.
I'm not sure this is a problem that we should be thinking about solving with our part-time sheriff. I think this is a problem for the York County Sheriff.
I, I agree. Iron Tales is not the problem. They, they run a business just like Willie's and everybody else, okay? People have parties at their houses, and they all leave their house, they burn rubber and stuff. When you enter the road, okay, and you burn out on one oh nine in Milton Mills Road, that is the York County Sheriff's Department's problem, not Iron Tales at that point. Sheriff's Department has to step their game up.
Have you considered contacting the sheriff directly? I mean, he's got a direct phone number, he's got a.
Well, that's the thing. Only day, only during daytime hours, mostly during.
You can email him anytime, just continue to send him email of your concerns.
I could.
If he's got two or three deputies under him, he's got his majors, I'm happy to give you all the contacts. Start emailing.
And same time, I think it was brought to our attention after I misspoke once, like a couple times, you know, that, uh, the state police does take care of this area also.
Yes, we.
And they could be contacted also.
I think that's something Bill could probably arrange, if he can see.
Should have to. Yeah.
You don't think that?
What if, what if we, I mean, it's, if we got a new contract, we're gonna have to stick
with it, but what if we research and maybe consider next year switching to contract, contracting a state trooper for our town?
They cover Acton.
They, they cover Acton.
Well, I know.
They don't do contracts.
Bill, we're already paying a tax to the county.
Yeah, so I said after that runs out, or, okay, I see what you're getting at.
You know, so this is an issue for them, and I think we need to bring it to them. I would suggest we create some kind of forum where residents in that area, this is so out of character with the rest of the town.
It is, it truly is.
And it's all around this one area. We don't have this problem, you know, burnouts now and then, but we don't have it concentrated like this in any other part of the town. And so it's a, it's a law enforcement issue, and I think we gotta hold the sheriff accountable for it.
Doug, with our board, would you have some influence with the county commissioners?
Let's start with the deputy and the sheriff. We would have to either get him in here or connect.
We just had a vote, we just had a vote, what, two weeks ago?
Yes.
Two weeks ago? On renewing our contract with the deputy, and, um, town.
Voters spoke?
They spoke what they wanted. I think now, we just have to make sure that, uh, Mr. King, and I think we're gonna have the state police looking at it too.
I knew we couldn't invite them both.
Yeah. Because, um, I know, I had to start, the, the individual called me from the state police, just let me know that they do take care of the area.
So, you wanna bring them into a meeting, do we have them contact Bill directly?
Oh, I think we need to surround them with a bunch of people.
So, what do we have other informational?
Yeah.
I spoke with, uh, Deputy Souza, and I spoke with Major Samborn.
A deputy Samborn.
Our deputy, I thought he was.
Sean Samborn is a deputy.
Okay.
Um, so I will say, in regards to asking the oversight commission, commissioners, I do meet on a regular basis, you could go to, I know it's a little extra step, but you could also go to a commissioners meeting and share this concern, I believe, that's me.
Let's, let's start with that. So it sounds like if the board's okay with it, we'll schedule a date, a couple weeks out, we'll speak to the sheriff, I'll let him know we've got concerns, we'll advertise it for a couple of weeks, and see who you can get to show up and share them with him, and let him address them directly.
I like that, that, that's very appealing to me.
Perfect.
I, I'd still say, every, anytime something like that happens, call them, cause they'll, let them know they've got a hot spot.
It is a paper trail.
And now, yes, now they'll trail them.
So let's give them a chance, I suspect he'll respond.
And, um, what's our contract deputy, what's his name?
Sean Samborn.
Oh, okay, so, I'm sorry, it's not, uh, Samborn I spoke with, but it's, uh, he was here at our meeting when we.
Sanford.
It was, uh, Major.
Sanford.
Major Sanford, right. Sorry, I said Samborn, Sanford.